Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Council Work Session Meeting, October the 18th, City of Gulf Shores. Appreciate you being here. In case you're not familiar with what this is about, this work session is for us to talk about and get your input on items that'll be on the agenda next Monday for us to vote on. So this is your time to ask any questions, make any comments, and we want to hear from you. We appreciate you being here, and hopefully you've got something you want to share with us. So with that, Council on Discussion, period. Mr. Harris.
Mayor, nothing, no new topic on the agenda for today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. First item on the agenda is the city clerk, and she's got three presentations to deliver to us. Wanda?
Yep. For many years, the Ballin County Commission had generously provided at no cost for the use of their voting machines and personnel. They would deliver and set up the equipment for all of our city elections. Then in 2018, the Alabama Ethics Commission decided that cities couldn't directly engage a county employee to do work like distributing, testing, or maintaining these voting machines without putting the employee in a position of violating the Code of Alabama by using their official position or office for personal gain. So the county commission passed a resolution providing for the commission to enter into an intergovernmental service agreement with municipalities wishing to continue to use the voting machines at no cost as always. Each municipality continues to be responsible for all costs associated with the provision of the services and all other election-related costs. So the recommendation is for the council to approve the renewal of our intergovernmental service agreement and authorize execution for an additional three-year term.
Thank you, Wanda. Council, any comments? Great benefit that we have. We don't have to purchase the machines, don't have to deal, dealing with them. This is a great opportunity for us. Any, anybody in the audience with any questions or comments? Thank you, Wanda. You got another one?
Yes, sir. We have a public hearing scheduled for Monday, the 25th, to consider the transfer of a restaurant retail liquor license from Tequila's Mexican Restaurant to Castaneda Restaurant Group, doing business as Cantina La Luce. The restaurant's located at 1545 Gulf Shores Parkway in the Rouse's Shopping Center. We will place this item on the council agenda for consideration next week.
Thank you, Wanda. Council, any questions? Any in the audience with any comments? Thank you. One more?
Third thing I have is board appointments and reappointments, quite a few. Billy Adcock would like to be reappointed to the Gulf Shores Utility Board for a full term of six years. Robert Malone would like to be reappointed to the Public Education Building Authority for a full term of six years. Councilman Philip Harris would like to be reappointed to the Library Board for a full term of four years.
Did he say that? I absolutely would, thank you.
The Beautification Board has several reappointments. Councilman Gary Sinak is our council liaison member, and they serve three-year terms. Brooke Taylor, Rodden Powell, and Zeddy Bauer are also up for reappointment. Ken McKenzie would like to be appointed Administrative Law Judge for a full term of two years. And Gary Ellis was reappointed to the Public Parks and Recreation Board in 2017. Since then, he has moved out of the city, so he's not eligible to continue to serve. So Chad Green, the SFO Schools, Chief School Financial Officer with Gulf Shore City Schools, has been nominated to replace Mr. Ellis. He has been contacted and agreed to serve, and this would be a six-year term for him. Sheila Hodges, owner of my real estate, recently retired and also resigned from the Gulf Shores Orange Beach Tourism Board. Glenn Kaiser's been nominated to fulfill Ms. Hodges' remaining term ending June the 28th, 2024. He is confirmed as willing to serve if reappointed. So we'll prepare resolutions for all these appointments and reappointments for next week.
Thank you, Wanda. Council, any questions? I will say, we're blessed to have so many willing participants to help us with these community, citizen appointments, appointments to committees, and they all do a wonderful job for us. So delighted they're willing to serve again. Audience, any questions, comments? Thank you, Wanda. Next, we have Finance Administrative Services, Cindy, with our 2020 Annual Financial Audit Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few housekeeping items to mention about the audit this year. Normally, you don't receive it this time of year. The audits usually completed within six months of the end of the fiscal year. Our audit firm had some staffing issues, a little, some shortfalls, and so they also do the airport and school boards audits, and those were late as well. We've applied for and received extension requests from the Government Finance Officers Association for all four months, that each month we've been applying and receiving those extension requests. But hopefully, we will be able to get this passed next week and, and get it out. And I also wanted to mention, we're no longer calling the audit a comprehensive annual financial report. The acronym, which we've always referred to as a CAFER, is offensive in South Africa, and since GFOA is a, the Government Finance Officers Association is an international organization, and there are members from South Africa, they've elected for all members to stop using that term. So those are just a few little housekeeping issues before I talk a little bit about the audit. The revenues exceeded the expenditures in 2020 by $12 million, but $9 million of that was borrowed money from the 2020 E taxable line of credit from Truist Bank. We had to borrow that money in order to pay Hurricane Sally expenses. So, but that did make our fund balance at year-end almost $51.7 million. Our goal is to reach 70% on the fund balance of revenues and/or expenditures, either one, you can look at it that way. But the fund balance of 50, almost $51.7 million represents for 2020 113.6% of expenditures and almost 90% of revenues. But again, because of the way we're forced to report borrowed funds, that's why it looks that large. If you took out the $9 million that we had to borrow in order to cover Hurricane Sally expenses, you would be more in line with what we normally do, which is between $2.5 and $3 million additional revenues coming in over expenses. And then we did use some of the overage this year to try to pay down Hurricane Sally expenses, as well as, we went ahead and paid in advance some transportation projects since we had exhausted, well, once we exhausted the 2018 A non-taxable issue, and that was a bond issue for transportation projects. And then the biggest thing is that we had no major findings reported for the city, and you can look at page 30, Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance of the Governmental Funds for more details. And our assets exceeded our liabilities by $110 million, and that also increased by almost $4.8 million from the 2019 year-end. And again, in my memo, I'm describing that we had almost $8 million in federal state grants for FEMA damages from Hurricane Sally. We had a decrease from the state of Alabama of 2 point, almost $3 million, 2.955, and that was mainly because the year prior, we had the Nerd, Nerd Laguna Cove grant in the audit, and that's a one-time deal. So it appears that it's a decrease, but that was why. And then our licenses and permits increased $450,000. That reflected the increased construction permits in the city. So we all see all the additional residential construction going on. Matter of fact, Lee pulled some data for me for the budget, and how many new homes were there? 450 was?
421.
421 new homes in the city, so that was real encouraging. And that, I think, is all I have to talk to you guys about. And I was going to show you again, we're going to try to do the popular annual financial report for this year, and this is a draft. We're still editing this, and our marketing person, Lauren, has graciously offered to try to help us make this look a little bit more readable. But I'll, I'll show you, if you don't mind, just go through it real quickly, how it looks right now. And that's, this is just trying to capture some of the main information, so it's easier to read. It's 17 slides, and I'll go through them briefly. There's the table of contents, and there's a picture of the, the mayor. And we talk about the annual report and where you can find it online. And as you can see, the bottom line references where it is, but we don't have it online yet because we don't have the final version. Once we get the final version, we'll have it online. And we're also working on converting that bottom line to a, a white color, because you can't hardly read it. It's blue against blue. On the next page is just a little, few facts about the city, and we had a few things changed. It's kind of interesting to me, the second paragraph from the bottom, the land area remained at 28.28 square miles, but the water area changed slightly. And then the average annual temperature was 70 degrees, and now we're down to 69 degrees, so.
So no global warming.
Not for us. We just live in paradise. I don't know. Just the facts. And we went ahead and put in the results of the 2020 audit, even though, the 2020 census, even though we didn't really receive it in time for the audit. But it's important to note that we had increased to 15,000 residents. We had had a projection the year before from the census of around 12,000. Our median household income did go up and to 50,000, and persons in poverty declined slightly to 5.9%. And all of these, this information, you can look for more details at the U.S. Census Bureau Quick Facts, but they do have a lot of good information. That's under, that's the light blue section I'm reading from. And then if you go to the right section, the top 10 employers in Gulf Shores, we went ahead and included this year, not just the full-time employees for the top 10 employers. We also listed the part-time, because it's a little bit misleading, you know, the Hangout doesn't really employ 735 people. Only 35 of those are full-time, and then 700 are part-time. And then you can go down the list. And the city of Gulf Shores is the second-largest employer in the city, so that tells you a lot. And actually, number seven, the Gulf Shores Public Schools, is also one of the top 10 employers. And so anytime you have in your top 10 employers governmental entities, that means the city is depending a lot on the governmental entities, more so than if you were in a larger city that may have other outside interests, airlines or things like that, that would employ large numbers of people. Our high school graduates, unfortunately, I saw that, that number declined just slightly. It's 96.1, that's down in the lower-left corner, and the people with bachelor's degrees or higher is 35% of our population. And again, on the right, sometimes you'll see repetition of information, but we do that intentionally to try to prove a point. You just have the geographic characteristics. We're just trying to summarize what's going on in the city. And these pages did not change. It's just some depictions of our departmental departments. Our component units did not change in this audit, so we still have discreetly presented component units, and those are the Gulf Shore City School System, the Jack Edwards Airport, and the Airport Authority. And the, the term PAFER is okay, that's a popular annual financial report. We don't include information on those component units unless we reference them specifically, because as you're aware, they each have their own independent audit. Operating indicators by function and department, the departments have done a great job in getting that, that information to us, and you can see some of the indicators. This is a slide, though, I have asked Lauren to help me with, because it is a little bit hard to read, and so we're trying to make that where it's a little bit easier to see the numbers. As I get older, it's harder to see these numbers anyway. And then the property tax collections is next, and so we have current collections for 2020 of almost $3.9 million. That's a $300,000 increase over 2019. And then you have on the right, a breakout of the property tax distribution of the 33 property tax meals we currently pay. Of those 33 tax meals, Gulf Shores receives five of those, or 15% of any property tax that we pay. And then you have a listing of principal property taxpayers, and it goes through by rank. As you can see, the number one has almost 1.24% of the total of the city assessed value, so that's interesting, and, and you can read the rest of them. Always good information to have. On the left, on this slide, is our general fund revenue sources. And so almost between, at the bottom, it tells you between property sales, lodging, and business licenses. That's 83% of all of our revenue collections now. So those top four are growing as a percentage of our total revenue. And then on the right, you can see the departmental budget performance to actual. And as you can tell, the actual, all of the departments pretty much operated within budget. That blue line is the budget, and the orange line is the actual. I did not realize those were all in colors until just now, but, okay. And then on the right, on this, at the top, is their 10-year historical perspective of revenues and expenses, and at the bottom is the major revenue trends for the last three years, from 2018 to 2020. And made a note there, because anytime you see expenses exceeding revenues, that's not necessarily a bad thing, because that reflects borrowing for bond issuances or other borrowed money, like the lines of credit coming in, if you have to have them come in to cover your expenses, like we did with Hurricane Sally. And on the left is the general fund pie chart showing revenues were 55%, and expenditures were right at 45%. So if you have your revenues that much over your expenses, then that's how you end up with a fund balance. But again, a lot of that revenue was borrowed money. And the general fund balance did increase a pretty good bit, and you can see that on the right side. The 2020, it went up by 12 million. And I appreciate the Mark and Clint updated this slide today in a hurry, because we had to get it updated. And so they did that, and it shows our major projects in the coastal gateway. We spent almost $10.8 million. West Lagoon, $1.6 million. The trail widening, half a million. And traffic signals and pedestrian improvements on Highway 182 of 5.8 million, as well as they included the major street plan, planning and design of $93,000. Then this is an update of where we are on our Vision 2025, or major things that went on in 2020. And it's all pretty exciting. You know, in medical, we had the broke ground and built the new regional healthcare facility, and education had their second year as operating as a independent school system. And the Waterway District, the Gulf Shores Airport broke ground on air traffic control tower and, excuse me, commercial flight terminal at the Jack Edwards National Airport. The Gulf Beach District, the city completed safer pedestrian and bicycle pathways from West Lagoon Avenue to Little Lagoon Park. And then the Gulf State Park, I think that the nine miles of new pedestrian and bike-friendly trails are still being worked on within the state park. That was a statement last year, and it's still the same. But if anybody knows that, it's been over to the state park. It's a, really, the lodge is very impressive, as well as the conference center. Net capital position shows we have 107, almost 108 million from governmental activities, which is an increase of 4.7 million from the adjusted governmental activities that we reported in December of 2019. And then we show our government net position over the past 10 years, from 2011 to 2020. And it's really gratifying to see all of our trend lines increasing. And then our final slide is debt and debt repayment. And at the end of the year, we had almost 109 million in debt outstanding, and that included 1.9 million for long-term compensated absences. And that was compared to 91.2 million in debt from the prior year. But we did make all of our debt service payments timely, and we have been able to maintain our AA ratings by both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And that enables us to save money by borrowing at lower rates due, or due to the higher-quality ratings. And so the differential between an AA minus and an AA plus is roughly half a percent. And if I do, did the math correctly, it's about, on $10 million, that's roughly 50,000 a year. Over 20 years, that's a million. So if you, let's say, if you borrowed 40 million, that would make a $4 million difference. And so if you can borrow it at lower rates, you can end up with a better fund balance and more, then you have money to spend on other things, other more essential services. And so it all kind of flows together. I don't usually talk that much, so if, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And we will have a full audit by next week. The auditors and, and the city staff are working on editing and making sure everything is as it should be in the audit.
I will make one comment, Cindy, that, that it has been a focus of this, the Finance Committee and our financial team, to do everything we can to improve our credit rating, so that our borrowing becomes a lot cheaper. And a little sense of pride, too, that we are at the top of the top. AA plus is about all we can expect to be. AAA would require a complete understanding of our storm exposure. And there's no way to, to mitigate that and make it go away. I mean, you just have to be prepared to deal with it. So we are real proud of that, and Cindy and our finance team have worked really hard to make that happen. Dr. Dyken's not here, but he is the chairman of our Finance Committee and drives hard on that. So of all the things we do here, that is really proud of you, Cindy, your staff, and our team, because that is important, that we're financial, good financial managers of your money. And so we take that serious, and I want to make sure that I pointed that out and congratulated you again. And I know we didn't get that, that award last year, and I know you were crushed by it, but I'm liking your chances this year.
Well, I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of the direction and support of the Finance Committee, but it takes a village to create this. And so I really do appreciate the city staff help as well, everybody. It takes a team to put this together.
Council, any other comments? Anybody in the audience got anything to say?
Great presentation, Cindy.
Thanks, Mike.
That's right. That gets us, covered up my agenda somewhere. It's Grant, you've got a couple of things for us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Jacob's going to help me by putting a couple of things on the screen. First item for your consideration next week is a request for the mayor to enter into an agreement, or to authorize him signing an agreement with a company called Audience View. Audience View is a ticketing company taking the place who recently purchased a company called Vendini. When we do online ticket sales for winter entertainment series and other events that we produce, we use an online ticket company, similar to Ticket Masters and others. And Vendini has been that company recently purchased by Audience View. And there's no charge for the city to enter into this three-year agreement. The ticket purchaser pays a $2.50 fee for the convenience and for the ability to have the online tickets. So what you have is a request to sign a three-year agreement to work with Audience View instead of Vendini.
Is that $2.50 the same as Vendini?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they actually negotiated during the, during the purchase, no cost to the clients, and same per-ticket fee for the three-year initial contract term. May change. If you look at the contract, they do add for years four, five, and six. If we enter into another three years after this first three years, there would be a fee increase. But at that point, we'll have an opportunity to negotiate and look for other vendors as well.
Thank you, Grant. Council, any other questions, comments? Anybody? Okay, one more?
Yes, sir. So this is a fun type of application for public assembly. Our, the folks at the Hangout typically early in November have done an oyster cook-off event. And unfortunately, this year, they're not able to do so. So what they've come up with is a fall event in November, November 5th through 7th, calling it the Abracadabra Festival. The Abracadabra Festival is a Brazilian festival, celebrating Brazilian food and culture. And the event will take place solely with inside the grounds of the Hangout Restaurant and their courtyard. The reason that it's coming before you today is they are requesting to use a portion of city property. And if you look at the screen, that's an aerial photo, and the two red circles are two, two areas that they would like to use of city property. The area to the north... north for VIP restrooms accessed from within, inside their courtyard. And then on the outside of their fence along that entrance into Gulf Place, they want to pop up a 20x20 tent and have a maze to be able to use as their box office, so they can sell their tickets. It's a ticketed event. People would purchase a ticket and then enter into the Hangout. But again, the event itself will take place fully within the confines of the Hangout. They're anticipating about 2,500 people a day. That's what their hope is. It's a first-time event, so they're not sure exactly what that will look like. We did review the occupancy levels and the flow of people with the fire department and with the police department and with Public Works as far as use of the public property. And all departments have signed off appropriately, and it's going to be ready for your consideration on Monday. We do have in the audience Josh and David from the Hangout. They're, they're here representing this event. If you've got any questions, if you'd like to ask either of me or of them, they're here representing. And with that, I'd be glad to answer questions.
Council, anybody, any questions? Interesting concept. I, it'll be fun to, to understand more about that and participate. You guys got anything you want to add or say?
Just saying that we're bringing some.
Could you speak into the mic please?
Yeah, we got people listening. Oh, boy.
I'm sorry.
I'd just like to say that we're bringing for this first year some entertainment and singers from the top line from Brazil itself that will come here. Some of them, we think, going to actually even visit the school the day before and teach them about the samba and the Brazilian music and culture. So it will be a lot of fun.
Sounds like a learning experience for us non-Brazilian visitors.
Absolutely.
Anybody else with anything to add to, to that? Thank you, David, for being here. I think that's all we've got on our agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or address to the group? Any questions? Okay, well, short, quick meeting. Thank you for attending. Grant, you got something you want to show, tell us about?
Will you launch that show? This past week, we hosted an event that we kicked off in, actually, 2018, was called the Haunted Hustle. And it was an opportunity for really locals to show up at the beach and have a 5K race, a one-mile fun run, and a walk, and a witches-on-wheels ride. 2019, the store, a storm hit us, and we weren't able to host it. And in course, 2020, we ended up canceling due to COVID. But this past Saturday evening, we had 450 participants in the actual race and the ride event, plus a number of other family members and youth from our community went to the beach at the town green. We've got just a few pictures here to show you the quality of the costumes, the quality of the venue, the location to be able to have this type of an event. The Dolphin Foundation sold beer and pizza. Our city store was there selling wares. It was just a really great community event. And I want to personally thank Nicole Arndt and her group from our Recreation Department, the Public Works staff that was on-site and helping set up and helping with the cleanup, the police and the fire department helping make the, the race safe, and the folks. Got one special photograph here that I thought y'all might like to see. That is Hairmeister Corcoran, who was part of the beer sale tent, and that is him, I think, sitting on top of a German, I don't know what that is, but you can see that. And then in front of our Small Town Big Beach tent, and the kids that were down there, this is the witches-on-wheels parade. They threw some candy to the kids. And then good activities for the children as well, popcorn and cornhole and different kinds of games for them. So it was a really fun Saturday. The weather was beautiful, a good opportunity for everybody to enjoy the, the town green and the beach area. So thank you for letting me give that report.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, folks, we'll do it again next Monday right here. I hope you can come back and join us. We stand adjourned.